Johnny, can you hear us? Johnny?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure you can hear me.
Yeah, I can. I'm good.
All right. Okay, we'll call it to order, the August 8th, 2022, meeting of the Upson County Planning Commission. Mr. Curry, can we get roll call?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Chair McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Here.
And Commissioner Dawson?
Here.
You have form, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Item two, the meeting minutes from the July meeting. We will get those at a later time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Item three, old business. Item A, application for special exception, SPX 2022-07, SMH Legacy Ranch LLC, represented by McElroy, Inc., Zebulon, 5020 Barnesville Highway. This is a continuation of the public hearing from the July meeting. So I know that we have received new information from you, Mr. McElroy.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, the public hearing is still open from last time, so we don't have to reopen that. Do you have additional information that you'd like to present tonight that's different than what what you did the first, last time?
I've just got the information that I presented to you all on Monday
Okay.
of last week. And if you all have any questions about that
Okay.
or any further explanation on any of that, I'd be glad to expand on it.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to understand before we get into what this list here.
Yes, ma'am. I just took the high guns, I think, A through M, and had an answer for each one of them. So hopefully that was what you wanted.
Okay.
Madam Chair, with the lengthy public hearing we're gonna have tonight, can we move item four up to above 3A? Go ahead and get that out of the way.
Sure. For the new business, item four?
Yes, with the special.
Special exception?
2022.
Okay, do I have a motion to do that?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so knowing that we're going to have extended conversation, let's get this other one through first. This would be item four, application for special exception, SPX 2022-08, Walter and Leanne Clark, 1365 Willis Road, parcel 093059A. 5.58 acres, it's AR, RV is temporary housing during construction. We have, I've got two that's marked out. So we will open the public hearing on that. I believe this is Walter Clark?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clark, do you have anything to say, to present to the board?
No, not really. I'm more or less here to answer the question that's being asked of me mainly.
Okay, okay. Let me make one, one other announcement. For any of this, if you're going to talk, speak to the board in any of the public hearings, if you would, there's an X over here on this floor. We'd like for you to come over here and remain standing while you're speaking and say your name and address when you, when you start speaking, okay? Um, okay, do I have, if that's the case, do I have a... Any questions for Mr. Clark while we have the public?
I don't have any.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Can we get your separate word?
This is definitely one of your traditional RVs during construction, temporary residence, 5.58 acres on Burkitt Road. As you know, travel trailers are permitted as temporary use during construction if approved through the special exception process. This is on the north side of Willis Road, east of Barnesville Highway and west of Midway Road. It does not lie within a special flood hazard zone. You can see that it is AR zoned in the area surrounding the property, and all of these are heavily wooded. You know that we have general review standards, but both the State Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners must review these requests by. The staff analysis going through those, basically, this is your traditional RV living there during construction. Heavily wooded, there really is not gonna be any impact to the neighbors or to the neighborhood. Really no negative impacts at all. Most of the additional guidelines reference the water and sewer systems and the building permit being paid for and received. You can see that we do have the well and septic installed. We do have the inspection information for the septic tank. We did not have the well inspection paperwork. Staff recommends approval. That's consistent with the evaluation criteria. There's really no impact at all. This is very temporary. The RV will not be inhabited after the home is built. And traditionally, the planning commission, the Board of Commissioners approve these with a designated time for it to end. This is the aerial, you can see Willis Road to the south. There's the property. This is a relatively, I think, in the last two years, a new subdivision. There's not a lot on the site. See the well and the power. And there is a shed slash garage, whatever they use it for currently. And the rest of the area is just wooded, and there's some cleared area.
True, ma'am. That's what a move is. Everybody's supposed to have a seat. If you relocate.
I'm sorry, what? Relocate?
When the board, audience, the board, be contained in here, you have to relocate. Everybody's supposed to have a seat. Am I wrong?
I mean...
Auditorium.
But we're not set up for presentation or anything else?
It don't matter, ma'am. It don't matter. That's part of your, that's part of your process. You have to give everybody a seat.
Standing room only. There's room over here. This is the only place we have YouTube for the people who are watching. It's not set up over there.
That's, that's, that's the board problem. They should be punished to come to a meeting and watch you guys talk uncomfortable. You're comfortable.
Stand up.
Yeah.
Yeah, y'all want to stand up, y'all stand up to me.
I can do that. I can do that.
Okay. If you're gonna make us stand up, then you should stand up to me.
Yeah, stand up.
Sure.
Let's go.
Okay.
Aaron, how many people are standing? Count.
Turn around.
No, you count.
I'm not gonna count. I can see.
Well, I understand that, but there's two chairs up here. Those three years.
What can they sit up there in?
That's six.
You said they can sit up there?
They can sit anywhere they want to.
They can sit up on, right here. Well, people who've been for me, y'all wanna sit up there?
Another seat over here.
I don't have a problem. Go up there and get your seat. Then it's gonna blow records now. I'm gonna put it on record. And it's supposed to be relocated. That is your bylaws. That was your bylaws.
You address that?
No.
Bring the attorney in. I'm sure he can tell you that.
That may be true, but I don't think you can do it without notification.
Well, that notify.
That's not our fault. That's not our fault. We cannot predict how big a crowd is gonna show up. We can't predict that. Y'all have opties. Get up here. They say it's okay? They take a listen to it.
Doug, can you, where are you through?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions once from that presentation?
No, I don't have any.
John? Johnny?
I'm good.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
With the conditions.
Yeah.
One year condition, length of time, yes. Okay.
Do I have a second to that motion with a one-year?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
All right, Mr. Clark, so you've got the next meeting. Mr. Clark?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, there you are. The next meeting is, well, it's in two weeks. Well, actually, three or four weeks at the Board of Commissioners. So you'll get the notice about the next.
Right, I have a sheet. I have a sheet.
All right.
Still with me?
See you in the next meeting.
All right, sir. Thank you. I'll be.
Okay, are you ready? Doug?
Sure.
Okay, going back to item 3A, application for special exception, SPX 2022-07, SMH Legacy Ranch LLC. This is a continuation, continuation of the July 11th meeting of the public hearing. So the public hearing is still open. I'll ask you again, again, anybody that wants to comment, I need you to come over here to this X and state your name and address. I'll give, Mr. McElroy, if you've got, I know you gave us the information, but I didn't know if you had other stuff to present to us. So I'll give you that opportunity first.
Leave my name and address?
Yes, please.
I'm D. McElroy, 671 Harrington Lake Drive, Griffin, Georgia, 30224. Thank you to the board. I appreciate y'all listening. Last month's meeting, we told you pretty much everything that we did know. And I think you had items A through M, 13 items that you want to clarify on. You gave me the deadline of last Monday to have that presented to you, and I met that deadline. And I also asked for some rebuttal or if you had any questions or anything you needed further clarified or anything of that. I also called Doug Thursday this week and asked that same thing. And he's done what he done at that time. So if you know some now, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I saw staff recommendation. I'm sorry. I saw staff's recommendation where he gave you all choices to do, and he did have some criteria, if you did approve it, that he would recommend be added as part of the approval. And some of the people here that represent Legacy Ranch, Pastor Mo is in here, those things that they make can tell you better than I can if those stipulations. I just, from memory, I know it didn't want any mud bog and any APV tracks and such as that. And I don't know if that is or is not acceptable. So y'all will have to help me out with that. But all the other information is the same besides what I clarified on A through M.
Okay.
And if you want me to go over any of those or expand on any of those, I'll be glad to.
Let me, Phil, hang on. Let me ask the board if you guys have questions specific to, to this that you would like to ask now? Or do you want to go through this list?
Yeah, let's go through the list.
And then come back to, to that? You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna work off of this list. I'm gonna start at the top. When I call your name, if you would, come, come up front. First one on the list is Greta King. Remember to state your name and address.
My name is Greta King. I reside at 1442 Zion Street. I work with the children of Linkin Park, and I think it would be a great access because there's already nothing for the children to do. We work from 10 to 2. We do other activities with the children. It looked like the, the movie's gonna close. So I'm definitely for anything that's gonna help our community. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Next one, Coleman Dumas.
Good evening. My name is Coleman Dumas. Address is 30 East Lee Street. Pastor here at Thomason, Georgia. Pastor Stonewell Worship Center here at Thomason. We do a lot of things for the community and the kids. And what I wanted to tell everybody, I don't want you all to think that this facility is a want. It's a need. We really need this. And I know when we had our town meeting, someone stated that it's something that we did need. It's something that's vital to our youth. There are a lot of things that go on in our town that, that these kids have nothing else to do. And we want to give them alternatives, want to give them a choice. And for somebody coming in to try to build these type of Class A facilities, give our kids this chance. I think it would be far beyond our imagination. I think that there are times in life where we can tie so many things up politically, on political levels, on other levels of disagreements. But one thing we ought to say is that we want our children to be safe and we want our citizens to be safe. And if we want that, then we should have something for them to do. Basketball is a great outlet. Boxing is a great outlet. But also to mentor. One of the things Steve shared with all of us at the, at the meeting, he stated that they find kids in troubled areas around the country and bring them to Thomason, Georgia, and teach them life skills. If he's going around the country to bring them to Thomason, why can't he use the ones right here in Thomason to change Thomason? And I really think that it's very vital that we consider that in totality. And this is not just for a certain demographic, but every child needs this type of help, and they need that type of choice. And I hope tonight that you all look beyond anything else and see that our young folks and the generations to come need something like this. Because as they stated, movies are closing now. There are very little things for our youth to do here. There are very little for young adults to do here. Maybe if we put these facilities in place, the young adults can be the mentors that they need. And let all of us have a play and a hand in this. And so I ask you all tonight, please consider, please consider approving this, that we can get this ball rolling and make sure our kids have something to do and be productive citizens in society. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next is Andy Chastain.
Good evening. Can I stand on this X?
He wants that one.
What's the difference?
Ask him. Ask him. I was told right X, and state your name and address.
Andy Chastain, 109 Daisy Lane. First, I want to speak to the board as Upson County Tax Commissioner. Over the last few weeks, I've had several people come by, call and ask about tax exemption status, the amount of property tax revenue and all that. And I thought I'd address it. I listened to the last meeting, and there was a little bit of inaccuracy in the amounts of taxes and all. But first, I want to address the exemption called purely public charity, if y'all are familiar with that. I'm not as prepared as a DOR representative to answer detailed questions about that. But I did talk to a guy with the DOR in the state that provides those exemptions. And he gave me a little insight on it. First of all, the property has to be owned by the organization, which I'm sure Legacy Ranch owns it. Has to be open, and this is to qualify for purely public charity to have a tax exemption. Has to be open to the public, okay? They also must be distributing the profit back into the charity. Now, I don't know if everybody in here knows this, but there's 22 parcels involved in this sale. I think there was a mention of 20-some thousand dollars property tax on one parcel out there. I don't know if any of these other parcels came into play. But I want to give you the facts on all this, okay? And this is if they meet all parcels under purely public charity. The guy that I talked to with Department of Revenue said that it's possible, you know, depending on how they operate out there, you know, and turn this profit back into the charity. Okay, so the 2021 tax total, tax revenue total, the Cathy family or the LLC that Cathy had, Dan Cathy, totaled 22 parcels for an amount of $45,800 in property tax revenue, which is split between county and school. City's not involved in this. Now, take this into consideration. Since 2017 to 2021, our property tax digest has grown $160 million. Even though the government authorities have rolled back, there's still been a revenue increase, okay? So in 2021, my office collected and distributed $26 million in property tax. That's counting tax on real property, personal property, title of law and tax and all that that military applies to that we distribute to the county and the school and the city. All right, so if you break this down, that $45,000, if they did meet the exemption status, that $45,000 equates to 18 1/100ths of 1% of property tax revenue. Coming into Upson County, okay? 18 1/100ths of 1%. I don't think revenue's a problem. For example, if our county can go out and pay $580,000 for 29 acres of land, revenue's not a problem, I wouldn't think. All right, so any questions along those lines that I could answer while I'm here?
Tell me what the tax was, you quoted 2021. Tell me what the tax was collected by your office from 2021 from Rock Ranch.
$45,000?
800.
$871.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. I went by your office, and your office gave me three figures for 2020, 21, and 22. And 20, it was $24,589 in 21. It was $23,108.67 in 22. It was 22, 205. Tell me what the difference in my number and your number is.
How many parcels did you ask?
I didn't ask anything. I asked for the tax of the Rock Ranch.
That's probably, that's one parcel that has all the buildings on it. That's that one big parcel, which is about 60 acres. This is counting all the other parcels, the other 20.
Everything's been included in this tax base that you're giving me right now?
It has.
Okay.
Yes. Any other questions? All right, so I'd like to step away from the Tax Commissioner role and address the board as a taxpaying citizen and a concerned citizen of Upson County. I can actually understand the concern of individuals that live in that area. You know, about the, what's, what, you know, about what they're doing out there, okay? If I think about this, I think the Harveys, representative from Legacy Ranch, Pastor Mo, and others have addressed those concerns, you know. And I try to put myself in the resident's shoes. And I think what they said about those concerns, I would, I would feel okay with it. And as a citizen, I talked with Pastor Mo myself. I feel so comfortable with it that I volunteer to help in any way they could. I think it's great for Upson County, what's going on here. I think that they would bring all kind of revenue as far as sales tax to this county. Whatever we miss, if we miss that 18 1/100ths of a percent, they make it up in sales tax revenue, that and more, I'm sure. So in short, I'm all for it, you know. I think it's a great idea. I think it's good for our community. And I think it's an opportunity for everyone in this community to help in whatever means we could. It's a good cause. Now, I also have a question of concern for the board. And it's more of a question that educates me as to what this board does, okay? Property tax revenue, the loss thereof, does it apply to the approval or disapproval of the planning of this project? I mean, you don't have to answer that. I just, I'm trying to educate myself. Does that, you know, apply to the planning approval or disapproval? I would think that would be left up to the Upson County Board of Commissioners. I don't know. But I see a lot of concern from this board and from other citizens about the loss of property tax revenue. Okay?
I mean, our, I'll answer that. Our, our decision here is a recommendation to the board.
Right.
So ultimately, the Board of Commissioners are the one that determines that.
Right, I understand that.
So our...
But the, but the property tax revenue, does that play into y'all approving their planning?
I mean, it's a question that gets asked, but it's not the sole factor that goes into making our recommendation.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's really what's my education. I mean, I just, I didn't know to what scope this board, you know, has as far as the property tax revenue with the loss thereof. You know, it's been asked a lot about this particular project. Are there any other projects in the past that have had to answer that question?
And there is certain situations where if it has a diverse decked effect on the property of the neighbor, you know, we have to look at that. Part of our responsibility is to take care of the Upson County citizens' property as far as if it's gonna be de-downed or not.
Okay, but I'm talking about tax revenue.
Okay, no, we have...
I mean, our...
Yeah, that's why I'm addressing, because I mean, tax revenue was brought up more than one time. Okay, my last point of concern or question is a question for us to ponder. Not just this board, not Andy, not the people in here, but the whole community. Dan Cathy, from what I understand, what I've been told, has allowed the Legacy Ranch to come here for the last three years and operate what they're doing. And they've had to do it in tents. And they've done it without an incident. You know, that says a lot. You know, now what they're wanting to do is improve the property, make dorms, all this stuff. Hopefully have it available for public use. My question is, and it's just a point to ponder, to think about. If this were Dan Cathy asking to make these improvements, would we have these concerns as a community? I'm just, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, that's, that's kind of what it's looking at from... I've been staying back for the last two months, watching these discussions, listening to individuals and all. It's just a point to ponder.
Next on the list is Sandra Trice. Uh, next on the list is Sandra Trice.
Sandra Trice, four, six, eight Old Tallow Tuff Road. Good to see you, Mr. Pitt.
How are you?
All right, nice to see you. Thank you. I'm gonna try to be brief. Thank you, Mr. Chadstake, but I think you really said what all of us were feeling in this room tonight. I'm gonna try to be brief. As a servant of this county for sixteen years, as a school teacher in this city for twenty-five years, as a resident of this county for over fifty years, I come to voice my opinion about the Legacy Ranch. And first of all, I want you to, is to consider, I'm gonna try to be nice, who was bringing, if who was bringing this project into town, would we be having all of these hearings? First, I want to say, Mr. Harvey has put Thomason and Upson County on the map. Everybody has been on Facebook, relatives that are away from home or calling back and say, how in the world did you get Steve Harvey to want to bring a project like this to Thomason and Upson County? Because they can't even conceive it from where they used to live, that someone of his, of his caliber would want to come back and bring this to their county. And I just want to express how blessed I am to say that I live in this county and that he sees something here that he wants to bring back to Upson County. I want to say, as a school teacher, when we're in school and some of my students are in here, when we taught school, we taught values, we taught ethics, and we saw some of the results from our teaching, not just in the classroom, but what we were teaching these children of our life. We don't have that now. They, they just teach the book now. And so the teaching part is either left to the parents, which very little of that is done, it's left to the churches, it's left to the communities. We're asking for all kind of groups within the church to come up and be mentor. And here we have the opportunity to bring something back into our county, to reach our children, not just our children, you see us in that, but he's going to reach a whole lot more children, black, white, red, brown, it does not matter. We, this is a win-win opportunity. And this, Mr. Harvey has put Thomason and Upson County in the spotlight. What is this going to say about our community when it is turned out? What is it going to say about, when a lot of them be saying, well, bring it to us, you don't want it, we'll take it. It could be somewhere all around us. We need to think very seriously about this. What is it going to say about us, about our children? Every day on the news, you hear it, children in the street trying to sell water, peddle a few nickels and dollars and dimes. You hear children with gun violence, little girl last night shot herself, four-years-old in the car. If we can do anything to help our youth, this is a time that we need to do something. This is a time that we need to act. And let me ask you one, Mr. Blackstock, where do you go to? I can't speak. Yeah, right here, not Mr. Blackstock, Mr. Chadstake.
Thank you.
I'm about to go to sleep now, Mr. Chadstake. He asked, he asked you a question, and none of you are really to respond to, but Mr. Pitt, you know the answer to it. When we have these public hearings and they come before you, and whatever your decision is, is always the same decision as the Commission of Board. They're not likely to hardly vote against the Board. Why, I know that, because I sit with them. And they're not likely to vote against what your decision is. Take this decision very seriously, not just our children, but your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren. Take all of this into consideration. Many of them left home because there wasn't anything to do. It's job opportunities that's going to come. We're praying that this is going to be opened up year-round. There're going to be opportunities to employ people to give out jobs. We don't have anything now, but I think, I hope, and I pray that you will take this very, very seriously. And again, the Commission of Board don't normally vote against what the, what the Planning Board says. That's the answer to your question. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Next is Maury Strains.
Maury Strains, eleven thirty-one Highway eighty. First of all, I did it before, and I'm gonna do it again today. Have I talked to any of you as Board members prior to this meeting about this, this hearing?
No.
Mr. Pitt, have I talked to you prior to this meeting?
Don't.
Say again. Have I talked to you about this hearing prior to this meeting?
Not that I recall.
Mr. Johnny is on the phone. Have I talked to you, Mr. Johnny?
No, you have not, Maury.
Thank you, sir. I, I do that because of integrity, you know? Integrity is what you do when people are not looking, not so much when they are looking. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Legacy Ranch. I've been fortunate to participate in Mr. Harvey's camps for over four years. I, I taught a segment of what was called Respect Respond. Mr. Cathy himself participated in one of the camps to, to support. I'm well aware that they're very dear friends. I come today to say this, I was, I was your Chairman of the County Commission for four years. Mr. Pitt, I served with you. Mr. Trice, I served with you. Jeff, been knowing you a long time. At least you like family. Johnny, you know where we stand. I'm not standing here begging you, I'm telling you need to do the right thing. And the right thing is, is to, to look at what this man is bringing to the table. I, for one, has been in law enforcement for thirty years. Do you think I would come up here and tell you what I've seen that's not good and wanted in this community? I get the community, those that are impacted, those that's got land. I see Mr. Thompson here, one of the landowners that are here, very concerned about, I get that. I'm pretty sure their concerns are, is it going to be a lot of noise? Is it going to be a lot of lighting? But what I'm grateful for is this, to show you the caliber man that Mr. Harvey is, Mr. Harvey had his directive operations to go throughout the entire community of the Rock. And so here, here we are, we want to be community people. We want to be involved in the community, we want to give back to the community. And then what really blessed me is one of my principals, sitting right here, who is a deacon at his church in the Rock, said, "Our church support this one-hundred percent." One-hundred percent. The outcry is, is, is the ignorance of not having information. I get that, it happens with everything. People put stuff on social media, they say this, they say that, and I'm gonna say this about Mr. Harvey. He got backlash for talking about his vision in his own home because he had alcohol in his, behind him. It's his house. I mean, if he got alcohol in his house, it's his house. But he got backlash for that. And I'm saying to us as a community, we was, we was a mill town for over a hundred years. The mill's gone. Mill's gone. We have things that, that we are doing in this community, but it's tax-based. It's costing the taxpayers to make those things happen. We have a man that said, hey, I want to come here, I'm gonna spend my money in this town to help it, not hurt it, but help it. So I'm asking you, and I know this is only a recommendation from you as a Board, I said at the other meeting, and we went through all of these different things that said the application was incomplete. I get that. I think there should have been a meeting with the, the zoning administrator prior to the meeting to say that we got all our stuff together, doing, we'd be up here doing all of this, maybe, I don't know. But at the end of the day, I ask you to say this, I've been around this man for four years in what he does with children. Not one time did we have an incident, not one time did the law enforcement have to respond, not one time did I hear people in the Rock say, oh my God, those kids came and they did this and they did that. It was, they were here and you didn't even know they were here. You didn't even know they were here. So I said, he's already said that he want to enhance what the Cassidy were doing. I just asked, let's not put power in our face, instead of being a community that says, we're standing up for our children and this community and we want great things in our community, and walk away from this opportunity. And so I, I implore you tonight to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that this hearing, this public hearing that we're having on this application for that property, make it happen tonight. So I can, and I'm gonna say this as a product of this community, I was born and raised here, I was educated here, I wasn't the smartest kid on the block, was not. But I had a successful law enforcement career with the Georgia State Patrol, and you elected me as the first African-American Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. So I wouldn't be standing here if I didn't believe in what this brings to the table for our community. So I said that to say this, and I'm so glad to see Doug here, who is the Mayor Pro Tem. Doug called me, said I'm gonna do my own research. Doug's done some research, and I'm excited to hear what he's got to say. So let's not be a community that had an opportunity and walked away from it.
Okay, Doug Head.
I'm Doug Head, as he said, I'm the Mayor Pro Tem, and I live at seven-eleven Greenwood I went to the, the public meeting that they had at the Fine Arts Center, and one of the first things I want to say is, I think you can sense a lot about somebody, and the one thing that really hit me when the Harveys got up, Steve and Marjorie got up, was really a sense of humility, you know? They've accomplished a lot in, in public life, and they, they've accomplished a lot in public life, but there's a real sense of humility. And, and so I really wanted to know, I know there were some concerns that came up, and what I really wanted to do is to go and do research, because really, I like to go and find out about, as much as I can about something. And so when I saw what they wanted to do, and, you know, I love what they said, they said that we would really want to change lives. And they said, you know, there's so many people, I think of myself as incredibly blessed, that I was born into a family that loved me and that was able to provide for me and that supported me, and, and the Lord has just blessed me in so much. But everybody doesn't, isn't always born into a situation where they have family that loves them and people that support them. And really what I love about this project and what Pastor Mo and Steve and Marjorie have committed themselves to is changing people's lives and to reach people who aren't born with the things that a lot of people are born with. And so I wanted to do a bit of research, and so I know that Steve had, and his group had spent some time at Camp Grace, and I called Mr. Pride More and asked him if I could come down and see his place in Roberta. And, and so I went down there, and before I did it, I called the, the Sheriff and I said, let me ask you, I know that Camp Grace has been there for years, and have you ever had any incidents? No, we've not, we've, we've not had any incidents at all. I went to the Chamber of Commerce, it was closed that day. So I'm a banker, I went to the bank next door and I talked to people, I said, hey, people that had lived there for a while, and I said, hey, do you know much about Camp Grace? And to be honest with you, the two people I asked said, we are aware of them, but we don't, I don't know as much as I probably should know about it. What that tells me is that Camp Grace in the Roberta community is a quiet soldier working to, to help people who weren't, weren't always born with everything. And so, you know, Mr. Pride More was good enough to take, spend some time with me and take me around and see it. And what I see could happen at, with the Harvey Foundation out there, the Legacy Ranch, what I see is similar to what has happened down there. And y'all, it's really a blessing that people want to spend their time and engage themselves in the most important work in the world, and it's changing people's lives and trying to present to me the gospel to them and what Jesus Christ has done. And I think we are blessed and fortunate to have this opportunity. I think it's very much in the light of what the Cathys were doing. And, you know, I just, you know, one thing I really noticed when I went down there and talked with Mr. Pride More, and I see this as what could happen there, really, there's a lot of kids that grow up in a, in a different, different environment, and it's a very difficult environment. And you have, what these people do, what Mr. Pride More does and what Stephen Marjorie are looking to do here, is to pull them out of that environment and immerse them in a different environment where they can see different, different options in life, and they can be exposed to things they've never been exposed to, to fishing, to camping, to, in the case of down there at Camp Grace, rock wall climbing. They're, a, a big pool, teaching them how to swim and how, how to engage with each other. I mean, it is really the work of the Lord. And if any of you have not read this book that Dave Pride More has written, I think you ought to try to get that book and read it. It's really, really a neat book, but it says something about the most important thing in the world is people's lives and the opportunities they have. And I see this, what is possible of happening there, I see it as something that gives people who don't always have the number, the best opportunities, it gives them a shot at becoming more and seeing their lives as, as, as something more and showing them different options that they might be successful in life. It changes lives by changing the environment therein. And again, I say it's similar to what Truitt Cathy and the Rock Ranch were doing. You, you asked before, what is it going to do for Upson County? Well, I think there are a lot of people that can be here. Greg Smith Church, New Life Church has taken people there. Tanya Brown is here, and she has been down there. And I think it opens up opportunities for our community, and it's, and I, I'm humbled that I was fortunate to be loved in a family and to be blessed with the love of a mother and a father, and, and I'm just thankful that I had those things. And I want to make those things available to other people who didn't have that advantage. And people like Dave Pride More and, and Mr. Harvey and Marjorie, they're trying to do that, and, and it is holy work, I think. So at any rate, Mr. Chadstake and others have said probably better than I can say it, but I, I'm very much in support of this project and hope that y'all will consider in support of it. Thank you.
Uh, next on the list was Lloyd Black Jr.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and Mr. Board. My name is Lloyd Black Jr. I live at two-nine-six Morgan Mill Road in Brooks, Georgia. However, I own the adjacent property in a small way, to the legacy property on Highway thirty-six. I'm an next-door neighbor. My family has owned this property one way or the other for seventy-five or eighty years. I spent a lot of happy times in childhood there. I spent holidays there. I lived there when I worked in the cotton mills in town before I finished college. So I'm not a newcomer. So I'm not a newcomer and I'm not a pro lately to this situation. At the current time, as a matter of fact, I attend church at Rock Methodist Church. Now, if I stood here today and said to you that I support this, somebody is likely to say, "He doesn't live around here, he just wants to add value to his property." So I'm going to handle my comments a little bit different. As I wrote on your sign-up sheet, I said that I have no objection to the approval of the application that is before you. I have had two meetings on a very cordial basis with Pastor Mo. I am convinced of the sincerity that he brings to the management of the project. I have never met Mr. Harvey, the Lord Business owner, but I will tell you this. Mrs. Trice spoke about caliber and person. The mayor spoke about humility of Mr. Miss Harvey. I made my own examination of the Harveys in Atlanta by questioning people who knew them. And I want to tell you, the humility and the caliber of person came through in response to my question. Not one negative word was said about these people. Therefore, to avoid the criticism that I'm simply trying to add value to my property, I will say I have absolutely no objection to the approval of their application. And I would add one other thing if I may. I see that they want to bring young people in and try to, as the mayor pointed out, improve their view of things. I try to help young people myself in other ways. The way that I do that is to try to introduce young people to what I call new horizons. There are so many things out there that young people can do if they have the guidance and if they have the preparation and if they have a helping hand from somebody who's willing to reach out to them. And I think that is what the intent is at Legacy Ranch that the Harveys have in mind. They want to introduce these young people to new horizons for their futures. That's gonna make a difference. It's gonna make a difference not merely to the individuals, but it's gonna make a difference to every person that individual touches thereafter if that young person is started on with the material. So I'll say again, not here to profiteer from saying I approve, I'm avoiding that issue. I'm saying, after my own examination, I have absolutely no objection to your approval.
Uh, next is Dave Pridemore.
My name is Dave Pridemore and I'm the founder of Camp Grace. Went to, uh, New York years ago when the towers came down to do some chaplaincy work. It was introduced while I was up there to an overnight camp for inner-city kids of New York. And I came back to it, to Georgia and found out we did not have one camp in this state that was for underserved kids. And so I quit my church and started Camp Grace. And since we started, uh, we're in Roberta, we're on three hundred beautiful debt-free acres. Uh, we have taken fourteen thousand kids. Uh, we have had over five thousand, give the heart to the Lord. We have right, we're running right now about thirty-five percent of our counselors, they're all college counselors, were little dudes and dudettes with me when they were seven and eight years old. The ages of my kids are from seven to eighteen. And, uh, we have five hundred beds now so we can, uh, accommodate more and more kids. Uh, this past year, uh, we had more beds and Steve came back, it was his second time. Prior to that, his, uh, his, uh, daughters and his foundation, they also do a girls' camp. They have another one this month at, at the weekend. And, uh, I just want to say, um, you know, we have, we run a very tight ship, we have a three-to-one ratio, we have all college counselors. And when Steve comes, uh, he does everything with excellence. Uh, when, when you take a look at how he, uh, runs the camp, when you take a look at the programming, when you take a look at the counselors, uh, when Doug was at my camp, he just randomly went up to my counselors and talked to them and there was one that started with me at eight, his name was TJ, and TJ was in college and he was just telling Doug about how this changed his life and it, uh, gave him the idea that he could also go to college. And so, uh, when I'm at Steve's camp, I see, uh, a lot of guys that come back, they're graduated, they're, they're, they're doing very well in their profession and they come back, just like my guys come back to serve the kids. Uh, we, um, we do a lot, try to do as much for the community as we can. We do Easter egg hunts, we do fall festivals, we do Fourth of July, all the, all the folks come out. Uh, we do a, uh, pastor's appreciation dinner, steak dinner. Uh, next month we're doing a, a first responders' dinner, Herschel Walker will be our speaker. Uh, so, and, and Bluebird Bus Company, other companies in Crawford County, they partner with us as we together are trying to, trying to help these kids. Like I say, we have fifty-nine partners in twenty-nine cities throughout the state and we, we have a waiting list, right? So if it's okay, Steve, I'm gonna ship some of them. But these kids absolutely love, love being in that week overnight camp. It's the highlight of their, of their, uh, of their year. And we bring them back when they're fifteen and we have two levels of leadership. And so where, some of my kids will stay there five and six weeks in a leadership program that we have. But all of our kids are underserved kids. I say that our ministry, just like Steve's, is a preventative ministry, is not a rehabilitative ministry. So we get the kids and we want to show them and give them a lot of opportunities of things that they could be, things that they could do. And so we're excited, uh, for us about the future as, as we're growing our beds and as we're growing the number of kids that we can take. But, uh, I'm just sitting here in support of Steve. Uh, I've, I've seen his camp, I've seen what he's done and, uh, it is, it's just phenomenal. So, thank you.
I have a question, if I might. Uh, you, you talk about underprivileged children.
Yes.
All, uh, city, inner-city stuff. How, how do you define that?
Um, these kids live, there's six hundred and seventy thousand in Georgia that live at eighteen and under that live in the, in the poverty, okay? That live in poverty. They're on assisted school, uh, lunch programs, feeding programs. And so I, my partners, uh, for example, Pastor Smith and the, uh, the Housing Authority here in Thomaston, uh, they know the guidelines and so they select the kids that are the most needing, okay? But that is the guideline, that they're kind of at the poverty level or below. A lot of them in Section Eight housing, a lot of them on assisted food program and their parents are financially poverty or below.
So essentially you're looking after these children. You're feeding them, you're not educating them and you're not teaching them to go to work. It's just a party, is that, is that right? Is that what you're saying? Tell me, please, tell me, how many of these children can you go back and tell me they have a job now and they're in the workforce and they're doing well and they're doing this and that? Tell me about that.
Yeah, we have fifty-nine partners and our partners, um, are the ones that are with the kids weekly. In other words, when the kids come to us, they learn things, they come to the Lord, they make decisions, then they go back to the partner and the partner follows up, okay? Now, I can go back to my partners, I've not done this, and said, "Give me the statistics of all the kids and where they are right now." I just know that thirty-eight percent of my kids, that my counselors that are college are, are kids that were with me when they were seven and eight. That means they have gone on to higher learning. Because I don't, I don't count, I don't hire any counselors unless they're in college or cosmetology or something like that, okay? I think our partners, if I had them in here, they would tell you that Camp Grace, and you may hear some tonight about the difference that Camp Grace has made in their life. What happens is when you're in, when you're at, at camp and you're going through climbing the rock wall, you're on the zip line, you're doing all these activities and, and plus you're with a college kid that's your counselor for a whole week. You're speaking into their life all week, right? It just opens the kids' minds about the possibilities of what they could become. And I wish I could give you a lot of statistics, but I can tell you that eighty-seven percent of our kids come back from age seven to eighteen, so they come back every year.
You also mentioned underserved. Tell me about that.
Underserved are, are those kids that are poverty or below. They're, most of them live in Section Eight housing, a lot of them. They're on assisted food programs at school. Like my kids, they went to, they went to camp, but I paid seven, eight hundred dollars for them to go. Our kids have to pay thirty bucks. We want to have low skin in the game, right? If it depended on their kids, my kids, to pay to go to camp, they'd never go to camp. That's why I started Camp Grace, because there needs to be this kind of environment. We have signs all over our camp, "Change the environment, change the heart." If you don't change the heart, you're putting a band-aid on it, right? And the only thing that can change your kid's heart is the word. And so, and, and also you, you guys talked about, uh, hiring people. We do weekend retreats, every weekend. All of our, all of our, uh, work, our, our workers, all of our lifeguards, our, our local folks that live right in Crawford County. And so we love it because we have a great relationship with the businesses and the people there. Yes, sir?
Your business in Roberta, Crawford County, I believe.
Yes.
Tell me about how many people you recruit, how many children you recruit from that community and that county?
You want to hear a story? Ms. Ruth was in the elementary school. The elementary school has three hundred kids. She has a Good News Club. The Good News Club, kids go Thursday after, right? She had nine kids. Those nine kids came to camp, then they came back for the Christmas thing, right? Three years later, we sent our staff down to help Ms. Ruth Thursday because she was running a hundred and sixty-eight Thursday after school. Because they couldn't go to camp unless they went to the Thursday meetings, they had to attend eighty percent of the meetings. They'll do anything to get to camp, they absolutely love it. They learn a lot, they love it. So we minister to them and then we have relationships like, we got Business of the Year from the Chamber of Commerce and, uh, the retired educators, uh, of Crawford County, they come out once a week and they feed our kids snacks once a week, uh, also. So we try to get as many people involved as we can.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next on the list, is it Rondellin Trailer?
Yes. How y'all doing today?
Good.
Right now, I'm, get ready to speak before you with...
First, can you give us your name and address?
My name is Rondellin Trailer. I am a product of Thomaston, Georgia. I live at 116 Shasta Drive here in Thomaston, Georgia. Um, one of the things that I wanted to ask before I even start, and I'll be quick, but one of the things to, let's start the conversation, which most of everybody that has gotten up here has said, but one question still lingers. How many of you, and you don't have to answer this, but how many of you have had a child or grandchild, niece, nephew, anything that's attached to you on any type of public assistance, any type of assistance that were needed, Medicaid, Medicare, uh, food stamps? How many of you have had somebody attached to you that has had these services? How many?
I mean, I, I can easily answer that, I don't have any children, so...
Nieces, nephews, parents?
I'm with y'all.
I, I think that I might ask, I'm sorry. You, you, you ask a question that there's only one answer for. You're, you're, either it's yes or no. But what I would like for you to tell me, those children who you address, what kind of background do they have and where do they come from and what jobs do their parents have to feed them?
Well, let's start with myself. I don't, don't even worry about it, y'all. Let's start with Rondellin Trailer. Rondellin Trailer was raised very good as a child by one of the mill workers here in Thomaston, Georgia. The pearless mill in Thomaston Mill, my dad and my mother worked. Those are now closed. They paved the way for me to be able to have a great living. I needed nothing, I wanted nothing. My grandmother and grandfather lived in Tryon Avenue where we wanted to go play every day. But what we saw was fun. That's what we wanted to do. We didn't have to have people that had to pay for us to go to camp, but we did. We had churches, we had leaders in the community that helped us, Mr. Pitts. And what happened was, along the way, I decided to feel like I wanted to be grown and be in trouble. I wanted to see things out there, as they call it, jump off the porch to see how hard-headed I could be. Landed in a lot of things that I should not have been in, Mr. Pitts. I still had a great home bringing, parents and grandparents, but I chose to see different things that weren't always the right way. So when I chose those things, I had a Ms. Washington, a Ms. Greta, I had a Ms., Ms. Harris, a Mr. Walker, I had some of the people, my teacher, Mr. McDonald, and he raised his hand because he remembered me, because you probably gave me a pedaling for fighting. I'm sure you did.
And it was deserved.
And I did, I did. Because I was a nurturer and I was one that wanted to protect others, plus myself, I was that fighter. I was that one that ran the streets when my mother was sitting at home praying for me. But with all these people, in my adult life, New Life, Stonewell, Mary Liz at Baptist Church, uh, my friend right here, Ms. Sandra Trice, Lord Jesus, had it not been the prayers of you and my mom, thank you. So what I will say, Mr. Pitts, is I came from a long, long line of greatness behind me, but what happened was I had somebody that believed in me in the midst of all of my mess. And somehow I ended up being a CNA for five years, caring for people, probably your loved ones in here. LPN for eighteen years in the midst of still getting in trouble, Mr. Pitts. And then I became an RN, that's an educator in this community with children, teens, community outreach, that looked up to me, not of what I used to be, but what I am now, because we all have been something. So, when my children had the nerve to go to multiple churches, which have been very good in their life in spite of their mother being one of the finest persons out here in this street in Thomaston, Georgia. You knew Ronda Trailer, you didn't know of Rondellin Trailer. But then they met, they went to New Life. And somehow, this is how I got my RN, Mr. Pitts. My children transferred and went to Camp Grace, it's right here. I stopped reading this because you gave me, you gave me what God needed me to say. My children went to Camp Grace and changed my whole entire life, my whole home life as the outset of how we were thinking. We had people to give it to us, to put it in our lap, but we didn't really take heed to it. Either that was because we weren't mature enough at that point or we just needed some different faces. So I thank you for that. So, when I come back to this, Mr. Pitts, and I say again, how many of the people that's attached to us, no matter how, that has had some type of assistance in this world, some type of assistance, whether that light bill, gas bill, cable, food stamps, whatever? And I am sure that neither one of you three beautiful people can tell me you never had assistance with something. Assistance is what it is, no matter how you cut it. Now, as I ride to Barnesville, Georgia, years ago when I was a little girl, there was some stores in... there was some stores in the Rock Ranch. Then I grew up a little bit more, there was a sewing mill at the Rock Ranch. And I know because I worked at it, a few weeks, not long. But I was, I worked there. There was a little general store across the street that you would see the little kids every now and then playing out there because grandma and granddaddy probably owned the general store. Now, you know what you see? The railroad track wood. It stacks occasionally. It just sits there. You see no productivity, nothing bringing anything into that community. But when Gwen, Ms., the Kathys, when the Kathys were there, it was almost like the Boys and Girls Club with lights. The parents took the kids. And what I took out of those lights, somebody had to work to put them up, to take them down, that's jobs. Somebody had to put the whole production together. Come on, Mrs. Steve Harvey. Everything that the Kathys did was what we're, what he is trying to do right now. This is, this is a Boys and Girls Club wrapped in love. Do you know how many of the Boys and Girls Clubs go on with assistance to be better people? Probably a lot of us in this room just was not up under the Boys and Girls Club. So as I say to you, it is imperative, it is imperative that we start to rebuild Upton County. We are not moving. We're not moving just because we're doing this center right down on Nineteenth. That's not movement. That's that we bought some land and we want to put this government place out there. What are we gonna do to build us? That center can't build us. So when Mr. Harvey and his beautiful wife and his crew comes in, I know it will because God has already spoken, it's already ordained. And I just pray that y'all put it on your heart to make it a little bit easier for us to get him in here. But what I would say to you, I am sure there's a family member of yours that's gonna be there, sir. There's a family member of yours that's gonna be there, ma'am. There's a family member of yours that's gonna be there, sir. Because we need this. I have three girls. I have three girls. One, right now, is dual enrolled because... Thank you, Camp Grace. Somewhere, y'all put something in her that made her want more before she graduates. Guess what? She'll graduate with a degree, thank you. Thank you, New Life, thank you, Stonewell, thank you, whoever played a part in it. So what I will say as I take my seat, because as you can see, I didn't read nothing I put on this paper. And thank you, Mr. Pitts, for that. I really appreciate it. But I would like to say this before I leave. My kids are a product of Roberta Camp Grace and a product of Upton County. Why can't the rest of my children be a product of what Mr. Harvey is trying to bless us with in this community? And not only that, who knows? I might be a nursing instructor at his camp. Somebody related to you, maybe something else. I can tell you this, it is not a color that this man is trying to bring in this community. It is not color. It is humanity. It is the being of somebody. It is not about who you are that used to run it, and now somebody else has come in, and it's about who you are, whether we let you continue in that. That's not fair. That's not fair. Let's let the light still shine. At Rock Ranch, just the legacy ranch is gonna be more profound and community-based. Not what we ride through. It's gonna be hands-on if what we have to go on. So y'all, please, please know that humanity in Upton County needs this. Thank you.
Uh, next is Robert Chapman Senior? If I got that right?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Robert Chapman Senior. I'm on the board of zoning for the city of Thomaston. I come here with very short words to this board and to the citizens of Upton County, is to say to you that this is a great thing, great opportunity coming to Thomaston. And I say unto you, please, do not turn a deaf ear to this application or to this hearing. Please do not come in this meeting with a closed mind, but with an open heart. When Jesus traveled the land and went through city, He was not welcome. But after He left, He turned hearts. We just have to make adjustments. I've heard many talk about Mr. Truitt Cathy and things he done. This young man's standing back there on the wall. He want to do the same thing, even probably a little bit more. We don't know what God had placed upon his heart. I know that you will take some things into consideration and you pass them on to the Board of Commissioners. I sit right there in the same seat that you sit in with the members of Thomaston zoning board. And we pass our recommendation on to the mayor, Protem. But our goal is in a meeting with a clear mind and an open heart, dealing with things with the project on veteran driver about the apartment. But one thing I want to leave with you, think about his work. Think about the man. Think about the community, what we need, what we really need. And I pray that God moves on your mind and your heart to do the right thing. Because as the young lady said, one of you sitting up there, family members, could benefit of the work of Mr. Steve and his queenly wife can do for this community. God bless you and forevermore keep you. And there is a good classmate of mine right there, Jeffrey Hill. Jeffrey, I know you're gonna do the right thing. God bless you.
Okay, next on the list is Dean McElroy. Do you want to wait to the end?
Excuse me, I'll be fine.
Okay, okay. Uh, next, is it Michael Smith?
Hello, my name is Michael Smith. I was born and raised here in Thomaston, Georgia. Six oh six Denton Street. I'm the owner of Diamond Cuts Barber Shop. I've been the owner for over thirty years now. The reason I named it Diamond Cuts because diamonds come from a rough place, where I came from. It came from deep down in the ground. And the only way you had to get that diamond to get it clean, you had to polish it up. That's the only thing Steve trying to do. If we teach young kids and polish them up. If I were y'all, I'd have been here that gal. I'd be here and set a meeting over, approve. But I'm not y'all. But anyway, I was just reading, let's just take the paint down off of Thomaston for a little while. I was reading, if you all got your phones, y'all can pull up as well, about the crime rate at Thomaston. I lost my brother here last year. This time, from a gunshot, trying to help somebody else. But the crime rate here is four to seven for one thousand residents. It's four to seven. Thomaston has one of the most highest crime rates in America compared to all communities of all sizes. From the smallest town to the very largest cities. One chance of becoming a victim of either violent or property crime here is one in twenty-one. So when it's gonna be y'all's, they hitting all the neighborhoods. They hitting all the, I'm down with them. That's why I chose the state to help these kids. I was supposed to be in the military right now. Twenty years old, I signed up, but I refused to go for the cause. I want to serve these kids. I want to help these kids. I've been coaching for twenty years with the Thomaston City Service Center. Me and Marcus Barnes, Marcus has been down with me. Well, we chose to help these kids because they were lost, and they need help. Where can they get it from? Fathers not in the home with them anymore. Fathers in prison, or in jail, or out doing their own thing, so they lost. So we had to become little mentors to little kids. So I'm asking you all to look at little kids that need y'all help. They need your approval as the board for Steve Harvey. Now, I'm more than willing, it's still allowed to put my barber shop in his place. There'll be more jobs. I can create more jobs there. I can train kids up on how to cut hair to make a living for themselves. They are lost, y'all. Churches can't help them anymore. They don't need to go to church. They dropping out of school at a higher rate now. At a faster rate. So they need our help. We need y'all help, y'all. Please approve what Steve Harvey's trying to do here at Thomaston. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next on our list is Steve Harvey.
Well, first of all, uh, thank you all for taking the time to hear it out. I want to thank all the people who said so many kind things today. I wasn't expecting that. I'm here to kind of, I guess I should say, calm the fears. Because I've been, I've been hearing a lot of it ever since I bought the ranch. I kind of opened this can of worms myself when I was on a podcast for Earn Your Leisure, and I said I was gonna bring three hundred boys down here and house them. I know that sounded like I was gonna bring three hundred boys down here to live, infiltrate your city and your school system. And that wasn't what I was saying. I wanted to build housing for them when they come to the camp as opposed to living in the tents that they had been living in when I brought them down here years prior to this. So that's kind of my fault. You know, sometimes when we speak, you don't really, how did I know that that talk I gave in my cigar lounge was gonna get down here and for everybody that saw the alcohol behind me. I ain't never done a drug in my life. I ain't never been drunk a day in my life. I had that alcohol because I got friends who do stay drunk. I have stuff for them. But I came here in a serious way because I've heard so many things. And I just wanted to be forthright with you folks and just kind of share how it really is. I took some notes as I was listening. I don't normally speak from no paper because I always go with my heart. I've heard so many things. Uh, I was trying to listen in on the last hearing that you had had, but I was working, I shoot my show up at Triller Studios, which is owned by Darren Kathy now. So I could only hear a little bit. A gentleman said, "Why would he spend this much money for just two weeks?" And I wanted to address that first. Because I come from nothing. I'm poor. And when I tell you I was poor, my daddy was a coal miner. We didn't have much or nothing. I didn't get my first car till I was thirty-eight. So I was poor for thirty-eight years. I'm sixty-five. I'm well off now. But I know all too well what it feel like not to have nothing. The reason I'm spending so much money for just two weeks is because a simple thing that happened to me a long time ago. See, if you, what happens to rich kids is, they get exposed. What happened to well-off kids is, they get exposed. What happened to our kids is, they don't ever get exposed. Exposure is key. When they can see it, touch it, feel it, hear from it, talk to it, meet that person. So when you stay in a nice facility, you start saying, oh, okay, you can get this. When you see somebody own acreage, you say, oh, wow, I could get this. When you see a STEM center where you can sit down at your computer and log in, you start saying, wow, this is available to me. When you let them touch it, see it, and feel what it feel like, it impacts them forever. They are forever impacted. You cannot understate exposure. What we have to do with our children is expose them to things they wouldn't normally see. The speakers that I have at this ranch are speakers they would never talk to in a million years. The head of Nike, the head of Ford Motor Company Development, coming in here letting boys design sneakers, design automobiles. Two of the kids from the camp designed a car seat that they now use at Ford Motor Company because they just had a chance to sit down and meet somebody that was more than they were. And so, why I would spend so much money is because I know if they can touch it, see it, and feel it, they can put it in their head and they got a chance of being it. Also heard what type of music they gonna be playing over there. Well, I've had this camp for thirteen years and we ain't so much plugged up a guitar. It's not a music camp. I don't, I don't, that's not why we're here. I spent two times at Camp Grace with David. We don't have no musical acts. It's not what we are. The purpose of my ranch is to change minds. If you change minds, you change lives. We've got to get these young boys and my wife's program with the girl, you got to get in between the psyche. See, Dave's program is far more intricate than mine. He go into this deep level with, with the kids, and he started at a much younger age. I started at thirteen. I'm trying to, in the boys' program, it's only two things, dreams and manhood. I got to erase their viewpoint of what manhood is. Real men go to church, real men obey the law, real men have jobs, real men take care of their children. Real men go to work every day, real men pay their taxes. Real men auto, real men respect women. They're getting taught by videos now. They're being taught by Instagram now. And when I get your boy, I change his mind in one week. For the first time next year, the camp will be ran by the boys. Well, how so? Well, because I've been doing it for thirteen years. If I get you at thirteen to eighteen, and thirteen years later, these cats is thirty. These cat, these guys is twenty-two, twenty-four. They're engineers, they're lawyers, they're policemen, they're military men. We got eight ministers out the program because we take their mind and we introduce them to something else. It's not a hard program that we do, and we got a lot of analytics that back up what I'm trying to get through to these boys. Now, the part about the community. What my wife and I had hoped to do initially when we came down was take what the Kathy family had done and expand on it. Just make it bigger and better. I think if you talk to anybody that works at the ranch, if they would tell you the money that I've already put into that place. Just, you know, man, it just got ran down after COVID. We're cutting no grass, we weren't doing nothing. I'm getting, this thing really brought back up the speed and up the code. I got a lot of money going into this place. And so, when you, when you say to me, uh, the, the cost of, see, the cost of running the Rock Ranch is about one point four million dollars. So initially, what my wife and I thought was, by doing stuff in the community, by renting the place out throughout the year, we would make money to put back into the foundation to offset the one point four. If opening a berry patch and a train ride and a Christmas display, that ain't the type of money I need. That ain't gonna help me. I'm, I'm trying to... I'm, I'm trying to take that money to offset costs, but after we got some pushback, my wife and I said, "Okay." What we've decided to do since the last zoning meeting was, we don't want to burden nobody with nothing. We don't want to come down here and try to change the county. We don't want you to have to worry about making the roads wider, because that's not what it's for. I only got, I think it's seventy acres, what we got allocated, a hundred?
It's three fifty.
Three hundred and fifty acres, you took three hundred and fifty acres? Took three hundred and fifty acres. Because, and it's back off from the road, what we had originally designed, we thought was gonna be in the front row. I've now moved it all the way to the back, uh, right side of the property. Took three hundred and fifty acres and allocated it for the boys. Now, it costs 1.4 million to run this place. So my wife and I decided, instead of coming down here and bucking the system, this 1.4 for tax purposes is a write-off to me. So we just paid 1.4. See, because we don't want to have to have y'all in here worrying about us trying to change the system. I thought it was already being done. I was just gonna do the same thing, so, you know, put a little bit more sprinkle on it. But if that's not what you want, really the place is for me to come and my family. I got seven children, seven grandchildren. I had the guy from Sporting Fish Life out there today. Renamed all the lakes after my grandkids. It's a place for me to come and enjoy, but three hundred and fifty acres is to change lives. That's a lot of land, three hundred and fifty acres. I don't need to zone this place where I can write it off. You see, it, it don't matter to me. Me and my wife paid cash for this, this 7.5 million dollars cash. We're leasing it to the foundation for a dollar a year. Because my foundation can't afford nothing like this. But if I lease it, the only reason we leasing it to the foundation, so anybody want to make a donation, we'll be giving it to a 501(c) and they can get a tax write-off. It don't help me to give it, if I'm wanting a tax write-off, I would charge going rate for, 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 for the, for the foundation to use the ranch. But I'm gonna just take the loss, it's okay. We can pay 1.4 out of our pocket to run the ranch. Currently, with all the camps, my wife and I spend three-quarters of a million dollars anyway. Just paying for tents and camps and airplane tickets and shipping kids in. We spending three-quarters of a million anyway. What we wanted to do was open it up and make it available for your children in the community. I know it's important, man, for those of you that grew up here, to keep it the same. No, see, I understand that, because you want, I understand, you want the wholesomeness to remain the same. And I understand that. You understand, I don't want it to change much down here either, because where can I go and get some pieces of souls? But what is gonna change is everything outside of Upsy and Thomaston. Thomaston, everything else gonna change. My grandkids not gonna be cattle farmers. My grandkids not fitting the beef or grass cutters. My grandkids is gonna get into STEM. They gonna get into science, technology, engineering and math. My grandkids gonna learn how to code, because those are the jobs of the future. You won't be plowing fields anymore. They gonna put a computer and a drone that's gonna drive a tractor, wash your land and bale your hay for you and you out of work. Our children need to know how to make those programs. Look, from my wife and I, to help your children is a blessing to us. God blesses you to become a blessing. You can't get a house up on a hill and then don't show nobody else how to get there. So we've always invested in young people because they are our future, man. If we don't get these kids in chairs, they gonna fall by the wayside. This young lady that spoke, that's a nurse whose kids went to Camp Grace, was a moving story for me because all you gotta do is, their mind has to see something else. You just gotta fix it. And that's what my camp is about. Dave's camp is a lot more integral. We only talking about manhood and judgment. And, 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 and that's what we want to do, so let me address this other thing. I'm a pretty good taxpayer. I send to the government tens of millions of dollars a year. Uh, I don't want to. They got a way of checking on it. You don't send it to them, they can come get it. So I'm a pretty good taxpayer. I know that every county relies on that, I was really intrigued by this gentleman right here, knowing all those tax numbers. And I found out that I'm currently about to owe y'all forty-five thousand dollars in taxes. That's fine with me. And I'm not trying to get it zoned to avoid the taxes. I'm just here to tell you that. I, I, I got other ways of saving money. I got a man back there on the wall, that's all he paid to do is find a way to save me money. This, this ain't a, this ain't a money saver for me. This a loss. This going in the loss column, but it ain't no, really no loss. What God gonna do for me? What he gonna do for me if I do what he tell me to do? I ain't gonna be, I can't get it back like he gonna give it to me. God deals in ways that I don't care nothing about saving no taxes. I care about saving lives. I came down here myself because I wanted y'all to hear it from me. My wife was coming, but she couldn't get dressed in time. How you can't put no jeans on in time, it's beyond me. And then she was gonna drive down here, but it started thunderstorming and I told her not to come. Because my wife speaks better than I do in places like this. Because at times I get emotional and, and I, I get a little, I don't want my emotion to be misunderstood as anger. Because I'm a humble person. I'm not an angry person, but I'm a passionate person. And I care about these boys and girls so much. I want to do something for your county. If you don't want it, I'm, I, you know, you know, I'll work around the parameters that you want to work around. But I don't want y'all to misunderstand what we trying to do. The thirteen years we've had this camp, not one single incident. When the bus drops the boys off, they don't leave this property. They can't. And we confiscate their telephones as soon as they get on the bus. So I got them for five days with no phone, no texting, no nothing. They, they can't communicate with outside world. I have their undivided attention, you saw it at your camp. I take their phones and put them in them sealed bags. There's no way out of here, you can't call Uber or nothing. And, and, and we get these young, young men and, and we, and we control their mindset till we got to the point where next year, these young men was running the camp themselves. It's such, like Dave said, they want to come to the camp so much. After the first day, we tell them the most well-behaved campers get to come back next year as junior counselors. Well, now they breaking their neck trying to be thought of so they can come back, because they never see nothing like this. You take these kids away from these streetlights, these check cash and place signs, these liquor store signs, these, these strip club signs, you take them out that environment and, and they cannot believe that these many men are pouring into them. Some of these boys have never heard a man tell them they love them before. It's just, it's, I wish I could get y'all to understand. Boy, and I came down here because I know we had some trouble on the last one. And I've had D-Go everything, McElroy. I've had my team go down this list of questions. We've answered everything to the letter. I just want you all to understand as best I can put it, what this mean to me. See, look man, I'm an entertainer. I'm pretty big in this business, come TV. I'd have done good for myself. But I'd have done that. It don't mean that much to me no more. I'd have made some money. I'd have made a lot of people millionaires. I'd have changed a lot of folks' lives. But don't nothing mean more to me than these kids. We got to save this generation. You can't leave them to figure it out themselves, they don't know the way. If we don't save these children, we doing ourselves an injustice. Your grandkids need to be prepared for a future, just like mine do. Now, mine got a lot of hand, I'm gonna just tell you real, because their granddaddy got it, got, they, they, their granddaddy, you know, doing real good. My wife just informed me that I can't retire now because I got to send the grandkids to college. I don't know how the hell, that's my responsibility. I sent all seven of my kids to college, now I gotta turn around and send their kids to college too. But she said, "Steve, it's your job." It's just my job. But it don't stop in my kids. I owe your children. I owe your kids. Because who my daughter's gonna marry? Who, who my son's gonna marry? We need better choices. We, we gotta fix this generation of children, I don't mean to take your time, man, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Hear me, man. I spent all this money, man, I ain't know it was gonna be like.
It's all right.
I don't, I, I ain't really get it, man, to tell you the truth. Be different if I spent this money. Open up a club or something down here. Try to open up something, make a lot of money. When I first started staying at that Jackson house out there, I went to Jeff McElroy, what's, what's his name? Jeff Manning. I asked Jeff could I buy two hundred acres. He went to the Kathy's, they said they don't want to sell. I said, "Man, well, ask him, could I buy four hundred acres there?" Few most went by, they don't want to sell. Finally went back to him, I said, "Man, let me, let me try to buy six hundred acres." I was gonna tear that house down, put me a house down there, run the camp back there. They said they don't want to sell. But see, you don't, you don't know what God's plan is. My plan was six hundred. God's plan was sixteen hundred. Now here, I'm sitting here and I done bought it. And I bought it with y'all in mind. I, I just, I don't understand, I just, I just don't.
It's all right. Yes, sir.
Figure out, man, what I need to do. No, I, I ain't mad, I ain't mad, I'm telling you, I ain't, I'm just passionate about it. Give me a chance, I'm a man of my word, I do what I say I'm gonna do. You can ask anybody about me. But just go check me out. That internet is, some of that's true, some of it's God. But the man that I am, you can ask anybody, ask anybody I've ever signed a contract with. You ain't never cut your TV on not seeing me on that show. I've been on TV, man, since I was thirty-eight years old. I missed one week because my mama died. I ain't never missed a show. Dan Cathy, I got his studio filled over two shows, I ain't never missed a show. I do what I say I'm gonna do. I'm gonna do this if you give me a chance. I ain't gonna do nothing crazy. I'm too old for crazy. I'd have got all the crazy out my way. I'd have done it all. I'm doing what God tells me to do. Now, I don't do it a hundred percent of the time. I do what God tell me to do about ninety-two percent of the time. That other eight, I'm acting like everybody else on your end. But I'm just here to do that, I want y'all to fix it for me. Give me a chance to do something right down here. I'll let you know what we doing. I ain't trying to slide nothing under you. Just give me a chance, man. Just give me a chance, so far I done what I said I was gonna do. And I, I ain't told you no lies and we ain't, we ain't, we ain't broke no promises or nothing. If you give us a chance, I'm using a local builder to give us a chance to go out here and do it. And I gotta tell you something else, I only, real, right now, we don't have the money for the dormitory or the gym. We don't have it. See, when I told y'all I was gonna get all these people to do all this thing, the only people really want to help me is Atlanta Braves. They really only want, want to build a baseball field out there. That's it, anybody, all these other sponsors, they not coming through. They don't do that, they all lying in the beginning. Ain't nobody that, that said it was gonna give me an hour, dollar, that gave me one dollar. So you know what I'm gonna do? I'm building dormitory myself. Because you know what, God gonna fix it for me. Because I'm just gonna trust it. That's what I've been doing this whole time. I ain't get to where I am because I don't trust it. I do what he tell me to do. Y'all, y'all good people. Y'all good people, I know you got a job to do, I respect that, man. But this, I'm closing this right here. Reason I really want to build this ranch out is because of a saying. Said, "A society becomes great when old men plant trees under which the shade they know they'll never see." I just put sixty-nine thousand spruce lean trees out there on that property when that tornado came through. I won't ever live to see the shade of them trees. But good men do things for other people.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions? All right, next is, and I can't read it, I'm sorry, is Adam?
Adam Hugh, yes, ma'am.
Hugh, okay.
I didn't follow Steve. Lucky me. Good evening, boy, how are you guys?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Jones, good to see you, sir.
Seen better day.
What's that?
I said I've seen better day.
Adam Hugh, 261 Hutchison Farms Road, that's in Pike County, so I'm not an Upsy County resident, but I have a lot of sweat equity in Upsy County. I worked at the Rock Ranch for fifteen years, Mr. Joel spent time out there doing beautiful woodwork with us. Uh, and, and I think anybody that's been there has gotten a glimpse of the magic of the place. Uh, I think the land there is truly special, not any person that, that necessarily planned programs there, but I think it's just an ordained place, it's set aside for a special purpose. Um, I've seen so many amazing transformations there, uh, over the time. And many of the folks in this room have had kids that have worked there with us. Uh, you know, there've been foster kids grew up there, Robin Rose Nelson, uh, you know, and, and I know they're good friends with Dave, with you, Mr. Prattmore. It's just, it's an amazing place and, and Truitt was a hundred percent selfless and set it aside for foster homes and then for anybody that wanted to come. And, and I just want to see that continue because, uh, the place has blessed so many people. People miss it. Every time it's Fourth of July, I get about thirty texts, "Man, I'm thinking about the Rock Ranch, I miss the fireworks." And I'm thinking, "I don't miss putting that on." But, uh, I miss it too, I mean, they text us, "We miss Santa, we miss seeing you every year." We miss, you know, bringing our kids and continuing those relationships. So there are a lot of people that really had a relationship with that piece of property and with this community and with, you know, some of the fun things they could do there. You know, we hired at our peak about a hundred and fifty people and the majority of them were local. Local as in about a thirty-mile radius, Griffin, Thomaston, Barnsville, Forsyth. Some in this room, Jeff was our safety manager forever, Josh was safety man, Freeman Esperus, who was here a minute ago, was a mentor at the Harvey Camps and a food guy. So many amazing people and so there's benefit to the staff and then there's also benefit to the people that, that come there for the different functions. You know, one story that I'll share, and there's so many stories that, that go with the place, but there's a, a young lady that came and worked for us that was employed by the Rock Ranch. She went to Gordon College, had never set foot on a farm in her life, had no intentions of ever stepping on a farm in her life. Her name's Courtney Jackson and she came down and she became one of our zip line employees and, and stayed with us for four years while she was at Gordon College. And I saw her years later, I was in an ag leadership program and, and I saw her, uh, speaking to a big group of folks. I had no idea what she had done after she left the Rock Ranch, but she went but she went on and passed the bar in Georgia and in California specializing in ag law. And so she's an agricultural lawyer that helps farmers with, you know, the legal side of being farmers. And all that started, she said, because of her coming to The Rock Ranch and having a job there. And that planted a seed and that made her go into that niche. And so, you know, we've talked about trees. I mean, The Rock Ranch is a farm and what I've seen over my time there is planting seeds. And they're not necessarily physical ones. We had a little cornfield, but it wasn't for production. It was for enjoyment, for experience. But the seeds we planted were helping people see things differently. The way I ended up there, I grew up in Griffin. Said I was never coming back. Not because I hated it, I loved it. But when I was twelve, I went to Disney World and got in talking with the guy on the monorail and thought, man, how'd you get to be a monorail driver? That's kinda cool. And he told me about an internship program he was in. So later, I went and interned there. I got a good mentor who just retired as VP of Magic Kingdom. And he said, Adam, go to college, come down here and be a manager under me. So that was my plan. I was gonna be an Imagineer at Disney. I wanted to make people happy, create experiences. And The Rock Ranch became my Georgia farm business because I married a girl who said, if you marry me, you're marrying Georgia. And I did. I said, I do both. And so I was at The Rock Ranch and that was our Georgia farm business. And we served people and that was, it's what I still teach people. I've worked for a school system now. I still serve people. I run our mentorship program and other tasks for the school system. You know, but when we were serving out there at The Rock Ranch, we were doing it the Kathy way, the Chick-fil-A way, you know, the my pleasure and the putting others ahead of self and being selfless and truly trying to care for others and love others. And that's how the Harvey Camp ended up there. Somebody that we had served one time recommended to them at a restaurant in Atlanta, some of their folks, have you ever considered The Rock Ranch? Because they had their camp in Dallas, they moved to Atlanta. How cool is that, that a relationship we kinda kindled by loving and serving? A caterer from Atlanta told them about us. They came down to Upside County and we got in the love with them, all these kids. And, you know, it was amazing. It truly is the most transformational experience I've seen someone do in a camp setting. Because these kids all got there all tough, you know? And the first day, they, with the National Guard's help, they kinda broke them down and showed them love in the form of discipline. And a lot of them hadn't seen that. And then they built them back up the rest of the time. And they took kids from the city and got them to bait a hook and catch a fish. And you got big old boys scared to death of an earthworm because they never seen one. And it's all about just getting them to see something they've never seen, getting them out of their hood, out of their environment. And there were white kids and black kids. It was predominantly black kids, but that's because they're the ones that heard about it on his radio show and signed up. This year, we had ten kids from my school system that went and it's because I encouraged them to sign up. So I think anybody that wants to can apply and be accepted to the camp. And if they're able to do it all summer as opposed to one week, that's that much more impact they can have. But I just came to let you guys know, and you're welcome to share with the Board of Commissioners. I've heard every word that's been said in all the Harvey camps that we hosted. I'm intimately familiar with everything we did. Most of this community doesn't know what we did. And we hosted seventy-five hundred people in one day for Celebrate America. And the traffic was great. The Sheriff Department helped us. There's a lot of people, but they got in without incident, they got out. No traffic accidents, you know, coming in or out. No need for widening the road. It would've helped, but if it wasn't required. We had forty-five hundred people we served for Geico's company picnic. Freeman helped. We fed forty-five hundred people in four hours out of that kitchen that's over there. Yeah, so we've been doing company picnics and events and camps. And it's been a positive impact. And I just wanna see that legacy of planting seeds, investing in people, continued. The thing that probably caused me to reconsider Disney was a quote that I learned as a baseball player in Griffin in high school. And it hangs over my kid's bed, but it says, "A life is not important excepting the impact it has on other lives." And that's Jackie Robinson. And that's what this is all about. It's just impacting other lives. I think I've heard enough to where I'm convinced they wanna help local kids. They wanna help all kids. They wanna love all kinds of colors and backgrounds. And so, you know, I think it honors what Truitt Cathy was about and what all of us worked and put sweat equity into. And I donated a couple of discs out of the bottom of my back over the time as well. But I would wanna see that work continue to have a positive impact on families and starting when they're young. Thank you for giving.
Thank you. Tanya Brown?
I'm Tanya Brown, I'm on Charles Avenue. Won't take up a lot of your time. A lot of what I was gonna say has already been said. Dave Prymore and Doug Head mentioned our relationship with Camp Grace. I won't go into all of that again. My husband Marlon and I have been here twenty-six years. The entire time that we've been here, we've been investing in helping young people for the reason that most people have shared, is to impact their lives in a positive way. Many of you saw our story on HGTV, Hometown Kickstart. I want to just share some of the things that you didn't get to hear in that story. It's very important, I think, in this case, because we're talking about lives and children. We never did anything we did for that kind of attention. A lot of the questions that they were asking us to answer, they were asking some of the things that Mr. Pitt asked. He wanted to know about outcomes and all this. But we didn't have that because along the years when we were doing it, it wasn't about numbers for us. We wasn't doing it for any glory or anything for ourselves. Nobody that we've helped gave us anything for what we did. We wanted to do it to see their lives better. We did a host conglomerate of things. But mainly, I wanna talk about our relationship to New Life Church. We've been at New Life for over twenty years. The entire time we've been in youth ministry, we've taken kids to Camp Grace for over ten years. When we first started going, we were taking twenty kids. And then, like Dave Prymore shared, it just, once the kids realized what was happening and what was happening was impacting families, we would get calls, we want more kids. So the last, probably the last six or seven years, we would take forty kids. Well, COVID cut that out. We stopped doing the children's program on Wednesday, so we weren't taking kids. Well, I'm also employed at the Housing Authority. So we have a five oh one C three group called Resident Counselor. I was able to convince them to, hey, let's raise money and let's take some kids to camp. So we took ten kids to camp this summer because that's how good the camp is to me and that's how impactful it is. I wanna share this quote with you. It says, "It's easier to build strong children than it is to repair a broken man." And that's by Frederick Douglass. So let me just share this. The story that you saw on Hometown Kickstart, all you saw was a little glimpse of Sherrell and that she was with us and that meant home. Well, let me tell you her whole story. Oftentimes, we say, "It takes a village to raise a child," but we never really identified the village. Sherrell was raised in Tryon Village where I work now. I wasn't employed then, but she was raised there. Her great-grandmother was raising her and her two younger brothers. Her great-grandmother came down with dementia, eventually Alzheimer's, and started leaving home. What we did not know, we met Sherrell when she was twelve. She was getting on the van, coming to New Life. That was a part of her village. She would come to New Life on Wednesdays for Bible study on the van. She would eat dinner there. And then she started bringing her younger brothers when they were old enough to ride the van. What we did not know was that that twelve-year-old, up to seventeen-year-old, was the head of household because grandmother couldn't remember to take her medicine, take her bath, stay in the house to dress herself. The police would call her at school and say, "Your grandmother left home." She was running the household. But nobody knew it because she decided that she was going to make sure that everything was well, that nobody would knew because they didn't wanna be in the system again. So when she turned seventeen, it got so bad, they had to put her great-grandmother in a nursing home. She was out here on Avenue F F, that, I don't remember the name of it at the time, but she was out there when COVID hit. Anyway, Ms. Emma has passed away. Now, long story short, Sherrell, they lost that apartment because she was not old enough to be on the lease. Nobody in that Housing Authority or in this town that knew their situation reached out to help those children. Nobody. Myself, my husband, and two other families in New Life said, hey, we'll help. This lady, she was a single mom. She said, we got room for her. We didn't have room. We were living out at Sunnyside on Old Alabama Road. We didn't have space for her then. So that girl let her live with her. Marlon and I became her transportation. Another family got herself on because she was in track. That was a part of her vision, her village. She was a cheerleader. That was a part of her village. She was in the color guard. She did all those things to keep her mind clear and she was an A student. She earned a four-year scholarship to go to Spelman College. She got her degree. She also has a master's degree today from Mercer University. She did that. So we were just a part of her village. We never stepped in to take her parents' place. That was not our job. We were a part of her village. Sherrell went to Camp Grace. She became a counselor there. Dave gave her special permission to be a counselor before she went to college because he saw the need. He saw that she needed that in her life. Today, Sherrell has been teaching fourth grade for five or six years. She taught in Atlanta and then she found a school in Mississippi that were, that were kids like her. And it was a school that was underperforming and she moved to Mississippi last summer to help those children. That's paying it forward. Sherrell is still a part of our family and we love her dearly. Do we want anything back from her? No. Other than that, she do the same thing. So guess what? In Mississippi, in Greenwood, Mississippi, she's doing for her students on the weekend what we was doing for her. So I implore you, I ask you to approve whatever Mr. Harvey and his foundation is doing. I remember when we were doing youth ministry, one of the kids from our church actually had the privilege to attend his camp. I had no idea that it was as close to home as it was. I started following the Harvey Foundation and Marjorie Harvey on Instagram. And I started looking at the pictures and I said, oh my gosh, they're not in Macon, they're at The Rock Ranch. And then when they started doing it at Camp Grace, we had been to Camp Grace so much, I recognized the property. Even though they were trying to do clothes shop, I knew what they were. So we've been following them. We've seen their work. We know what they've been doing. So to me, it's worth it to have that. When I see Sherrell and I see other students, it is not just her. We had a student that came. She was an Upside Lee student as well. She became, she worked at the camp a few summers. She became the women's dean at the camp. And she graduated UGA and she's gone on to do great things. That was Mary. And we've had several students. All of the students that we've sent, I wish I hadn't come straight from work. I would have some infinitive numbers for you. But we've sent CITs, which is Counselors in Training, as Dave mentioned. We have, we've sent counselors and we've had the two women to kinda rise up and be leaders. All of those students that have not graduated college, they are still in college today or they have graduated and they're working in their careers. So I just want you to consider that. You wanna know outcomes, you wanna know, and I wanna say this too. Sherrell's family was not a criminal family, but they needed that part of that. She needed that to get to where she is and she is a valuable asset everywhere she is.
Then we're done. It's all over. What was your name? What is that?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh.
Signing sheet.
Um, sure.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Edward Cersey. I'm five twenty-five Acorn Drive here in Thomaston. Came from a pretty, I would say, successful family here in Thomaston. My dad was on the Sheriff's Department for twenty-three years. rose up the rank, become captain of investigation. Lastly, he was magistrate court, assistant judge, boy retired. Product of Dorothy Elizabeth Cersey, who wasn't educated here, also a coach. She did a lot of things with the youth along this trice. My uncle was James Cersey. He gave a lot of himself to this community. My dad tried to get me to go into law enforcement. I went here. I grew up with Run the Land Trailer. We went to school together. We had some of the same kinda characteristics. We want, do our own thing. But you know, the values my family instilled in me kept me going. And I wanted to help make a difference in this community. My wife and I, we have a son who has a master's degree in mental health counseling. Came back home to help this community. It was a struggle, but he had to move on somewhere else because of some hindrances here. I have a daughter. She just came back last month from Dubai. Spent two years over there teaching. Wanted her to come back to Thomaston. She didn't see any hope here. She moved somewhere else. Got a son. Very talented young man. I didn't understand, he's athletic. I didn't understand at the time why he wasn't getting the notice that I thought that he could get. But that was fine. I found out last year. Even through the pandemic and the COVID years and so forth, he still got an athletic scholarship. It took him an hour. It's like, man, my son fourteen hours away. Why? But he went early. He went beginning of last summer. They sent him to Oklahoma. It was, it was article in the paper. He got in a program with a four-star general. I was able to meet this four-star general through my son. This four-star general sat down to hear my story and what we've done. He gave me great ideas of what I can bring to Upside County. I also wanna bring him here. We also met one of the survivors of the Oklahoma City bombing. Heard his story. He was on the first floor, government agent. He wants to come to Thomaston and share a story. I mentioned it to some organizations here, but we really don't have the means to get him here, house him, and an arena to basically put all this together. Have I given up on it? No. Still working on it. Now, my story. About ten years ago, my wife and I started a foundation justifying our youth community development program. Me and that lady right there in the lime green shirt with the T-shirt on representing that program. I didn't mean to wear that shirt because at the time, all me, I didn't want anybody to know my pastor. If they did, if you from Thomaston, probably know I am, but I didn't wanna speak on that. I don't wanna speak on the foundation. We started this with about ten kids, Monday through Friday. Sacrificed our job. We had, got a business. We sacrificed our business for eight weeks throughout the summer to spend time with these kids, Monday through Friday, from twelve to six, feeding them, doing different ministries. Oh, at that time, our church was on Liberty Chapel Road out in the rock. Small church, small partial land. We had kids having to do activities outside in a graveyard. In a graveyard. God blessed us because people way out there in the rock, on Liberty Chapel Road, people heard about what we was doing, riding by to see what was going on. And my auntie had a cleaner down by Mike's store downtown. Went and questioned her, thought we was doing a daycare. Find out what we was doing. People wanted to get involved, wanted to donate. Eventually, we got connected with an organization here. That organization adopted the program. The program grew. We actually got out of that facility, got into a facility with classrooms. That was our vision with the church, to be in a facility with classrooms, that we have the school programs, things of this nature with the youth of this community. We got there. Now, we're, we're in a building on six acres of land. We got a six thousand square foot building. It's not enough. It's been some times. One year, we had a hundred and forty-three kids. Now, I'm sorry, my sister-in-law, she would get off and work on her lunch break, come participate. So we started getting other people, start participating, giving their time. The program is ten years old. We haven't had a paid employee yet. No one has gotten paid. Sacrificing from our business, sacrificing from their jobs, no one got paid because of the passion for these youth. Do we need other people? Yes, we do. Can we get them? No, we cannot. Why? Because people want to get paid. We don't have the means to pay them. So the foundation could grow bigger. With that hundred and forty-three kids, we were trying to mentor them, give them some educational values, human values, everything to complete- human values, everything to complete a whole charter. Three acres of land sit there with woods on it. We're still having to pay taxes on it because we hadn't cut the trees down. So we're still responsible for that. Out of that, we had a vision. We wanted to put a facility there. We wanted a three-story facility. Bottom floor is going to be gym, weight rooms and so forth. Second floor is going to be administrative offices, computer labs. Third floor is going to be a transitional center to help people come back that needed a transition back into the community. We haven't got there. Why? Because we don't have the means to do it. We got the place. We really don't even have the room. Mr. Harvey got, what, more than 99% of what we need? So we got all this stuff going on. Now you're talking about stats. Let me tell you. 10 years ago, we started this program. We are starting to see the success of your youth here in Upton County. We got one female just graduated with a mechanical engineering degree in four years out of a five-year program. Got one young lady. She came from, and people may know, so I'm trying to be discreet, but it's a testimony. She came from a not-so-good living area, I would say. Um, but the police told me she'll be pregnant before she's 16. She was 14. Through her mentorship, we brought in church. She never missed a Sunday. She is not pregnant and she's ministering to the work. Stats. We have some young men, military one. They did a story on him. He's on a nuclear submarine. Your Thomaston kids. We have kids that are in college, kids that have their own business. One in a political arena, you may see him one day on national TV in a political arena. So yes, these are children from Upton County that came into the program lacking the facilities and the resources we need to do a greater job. The Rock Ranch. That was our little safe haven because we didn't have nowhere else to go in Thomaston. We took them to the Rock Ranch. The stories you're hearing about what people can do out there, I got some pictures for you. Sitting fishing with the kids. With the kids baiting the hook. With the kids on the rock wall. With the kids on the train, on the go-cars, on the mini ponies. All of these was every year up until two years ago when the pandemic hit. Now, and I'm going to finish here. We would get there because we didn't have the means to do what we wanted to do. So we had to cut it down. We went to 40 kids. We lost 100 kids because we didn't have the resources and means to do what we needed to do. So it hurt us to select 40 kids to start doing overnight trips. These trips came from local businessmen and businesswomen that donate monies into our program that allowed us to take the Florida to the Holy Land. Uh, the last one we did, I'm not going to name everyone, but the last one we did with the Great Smoky Mountains in Tennessee. We got cabins. And in those cabins, we had two, one for the guys and one for the girls. We spent the night watching these kids shed tears to share intimate stories about where they're from, where they want to go, and need help to get there. Now, I just told you my son, mental health counselor. Have a great job opportunity he just verbally committed to today to a large institution here in Georgia. Donates his time with these kids. Donate his time to help them, to show them how to apply for college, to let them know how they need to go about getting funds to get to college when your parents can't pay for it, to encourage them to get there when everybody else said you can't. So can Upton County be a difference maker in the world? Yes, yes. But we need means, we need resources. Our foundation, we can't do it, Mr. Harvey did. We can barely get to Tennessee. Eight weeks out the year, eight weeks throughout the summer. From the week after school get out to the week before, school goes back. We spend one week getting acclimated again with the kids, them getting acclimated back together. So we lose one week there. The last two weeks, we're preparing for graduation. Yes, we do a graduation. The last week, we're doing our overnight trip. So we lose three weeks, we only get five weeks with them. Now God has given me the vision, we're going to do a year-round. I'm in the process now of trying to get everything set up. After two years, we're finally coming back together. What we're coming back together to do? Thank God for the local businessmen and women here. We're taking 40 kids to the Atlanta Falcons game when Jacksonville Jaguars come to town to go and support Trayvon Walker and put Upton County on the map. The T-shirt say hometown fan, Thomaston, Georgia. We're representing Thomaston. All we need is more resources, more resources to help our youth. This is our bloodline. The stories I'm telling you, these are your products, yours. You heard from Camp Grace, wonderful job. You asked about what Crawford County is doing? What can Upton County do?
I promised you I would come back to you. I don't know how long ago that was, but it was a long time ago. Um, anything that you need to add?
I don't think so, Madam Chair. I don't think I can put it nearly as eloquent as all the people that got up and spoke. I think they made y'all's job real easy on y'all for y'all to recommend the program.
So Johnny, I'm including you. Any questions for Mr. McElroy?
What about this list?
Well, that, and that's fine. I mean, that's all I'm saying, just opening it up to questions. If if I'm assuming, I'm I'm pointing the D because you're kind of the point person for this, but you you've also got Mr. Harvey back here in the back. So.
I don't have any.
I have the question.
I'm sorry, Johnny?
Yes, I have no questions for Dee or for Mr. Harvey.
Okay.
We need to talk about this sheet of paper.
You can.
Does he have a copy?
No. That's yours, that's your notes. That's, this is your notes.
Okay, I I have some questions about the, about the trust. There's a, there's a question about deeds that we don't have and some things that we don't know about that we would ask that you provide some answers for.
We can't hear. Can you speak up?
There's a Truitt Family, Truitt Cathy Family Trust to SMH Legacy Ranch LLC. I have some numbers, 066-8010.
Can you speak up, please? Yeah, they can't hear you in the back.
Here.
Oh, okay. Anyway, what I would like to have from you is resolution with this, with what I'm going to ask you. I'm not going to give you the paper, I'm going to ask you the question. And it deals with property tag, property deed numbers is what we're looking at.
I I think, Mr. Pitts, what you're looking at is a deed which gives the Truitt, I mean, I'm sorry, the Cathy family first right of refusal if the property is ever sold.
That's what I'm looking at.
So they have, they have that, that?
Can y'all speak to that?
I I, we don't know what he's asking. I'm sorry, I'm bringing the word to some Mr. Harvey. I happen to know what he's talking about.
Okay, on the deed, I think it uh is besides a warranty deed, it was something to this day. The Cathy family had first right of refusal where the Harvey family should ever sell the property.
Yeah, if it was sold to a third party, they have the right to purchase it back, but it's not being sold.
Right, but is that in the future? Is that, that goes forward?
That's in the future, in the future years. If the Harvey family were to decide to sell the property, they would offer it to the Cathy family first.
Okay.
Okay, the next question I have, Winchay Palm LLC, this is your company. Deed number 079003 is a house inside. I'd like some resolution to that portion of that property also.
So the, I think what, what Joel's looking at, and tell me if I'm, if I'm right here, is there's multiple deeds with multiple tracts that were conveyed over. Some of them were in the Cathy Family Trust.
All of those, approximately 26 tracts, is that right?
21, I think, yeah. But some were Winchay, Winchay Center, some were the Rock Ranch LLC. All of those went to SMH Legacy LLC.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The question about the deeds, we're good to?
Yeah, yeah, that that answered that. Um, what we're trying to get is because the tax assessor's site is not fully up to date with all that. So that's what we're trying to make sure on that. Um, one other question that I just want to make sure that we get clarified. Um, is Brock, Broderick here? Well, I mean, he didn't have to come in here. I didn't know if he was here, I couldn't, didn't see him before. So at the last meeting, um, you had stated that the foundation owned the Rock Ranch, or was buying the Rock Ranch. Is that right?
No, can I speak?
Sure.
So Broderick works for the organization, Ronald Warrior, that did the deal.
Sure.
The foundation doesn't own it. So the Harvey, SMH Legacy Ranch LLC, which is an entity that is owned by the Mr. and Mrs. Harvey, they own the property. And that is going to be leased to the foundation so that they can use it. And the purpose of the lease is so that when third parties, if and when they do, donate anything to the foundation, then there can be a write-off for that third party. So the only purpose is, the Harvey's wanting to buy the property for themselves. However, in order to build this up, I mean, obviously they can pay for their work themselves, but to get third parties, the only way third parties, no matter what the organization is, people don't give free. The way people give is so that they can get a write-off.
Right.
So the only way from a structural standpoint is, is to have a lease to the foundation so that those third parties can be able to donate.
Right, okay.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong, but the the foundation that owns the property is not a 501(c)(5).
No, it's not.
It is not.
It's not a foundation.
It's not a foundation. That's what we're trying to clarify, just from that conversation, what, what we had last time. So it's, it's not the foundation that owns it, it's SMH Legacy LLC.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Tell me about the Jackson Road property, 300 acres.
I'm not sure, Mr. Pitts, on that, is that one of the properties I had listed on my application? If it's one of, it's approximately 1,500 and some odd acres there, I'm assuming that's one of the parcels.
Yeah, it's one of the, it's, it's multiple of the 1,500 acres, but it's not part of the 300.
All we're asking for the special exception on is that property, and we'll have it surveyed out, but it's about, what is it, 305?
305.
I think I said 350, or is it 305?
I I I still don't have satisfactory answer on water and sewer.
That, that will all be addressed through the proper channels and the government agencies, the Health Department and EPD. It'll all be designed to lease.
When does that, when are we going to have that information?
Well, as soon as we get approval, obviously we'll start hiring the proper engineers to get, you know, all these designs. So we didn't want to get the cart before the horse and hire all the necessary people.
Based on your experience, what, what size, what capacity, housing?
About 30,000 gallons per day.
Per day?
Yes.
And that would be, tell me about the wells, if you might.
It would be wells and storage tanks.
Okay. Any signage of anything that we, we need to look at? How are you going to advertise?
Any signage at the roads?
Is it going to be?
No, there's no, there's no intentional plans right now. Whatever they've got in a wooded area right now, probably going to be.
Tell me about the 48 weeks of the year that there's nothing going on.
It's uh, it's in your package, Mr. Pitts. I think that's when they're going to have the Christmas lights, maybe a train that runs through, a petting zoo, berry picking, maybe Easter egg hunt, Halloween. All that hasn't been 100% defined, but you know, it's just, it's a, it's a work in progress. It'll be similar to the way the Cathys operate.
How, how will that work into the period of time when there will be students on this?
It'll just be worked around?
This will be worked around what those students are doing, but.
So is the question, what will be done in the other 48 weeks? So I don't think it's anything inconsistent with what the Cathy families already been doing. I think they mentioned it to what the problem was with Camp Grace. So if there's something for the Fourth of July, it'll be special occasions. There's nothing, it's going to be some magic thing. It's going to be on Christmas where it might be something, it might be something in the summer. It might be something on the Fourth of July. It won't be when any of the camps are happening. So if there's able to be utilization of the property in the other 48 weeks, then that's what will happen. But there's no plans of occurring to have some huge advertising to do things on August 9th. It's for special occasions, just how the Catholics did it previously.
If I may, he's talking about the STEM center. That is what I'm addressing to you all. If we got nine to 10 months with a STEM center with our youth here or surrounding counties, you are giving them the developmental tools they need to prepare themselves for their future. So it's not staying idle. If, if the proposal is submitted to the foundation, they approve the proposal, is foundation like the joy that's already implemented here in Upton County? They can help, like Mr. Smith said, polish up what's already here.
You going to do anything with agritourism, anything, any requirements on that?
They want to have a corn maze and do some different plantings there.
Agritourism out the window, essentially, is what you're saying. You're not going to be concerned with that.
You know, maybe, maybe not. I don't want to promise one thing or another on that.
So just, just to, just to clarify, the, the facilities that you're looking to build, you're looking to use those for just these camps?
At the present, yes.
Okay.
I would have opened it up to the township people during all season if they could find adequate use for it. I would make it available for them if they had programming that would stop. If, if that's not, see, I, but I don't want to commit to that if that's not what you all want. Because then I just want to, everything is designed for these two weeks of camp. As much money as it may appear to be, it's still designed for two weeks of camp. Our additional hope was that these facilities could also benefit you guys when we weren't running the camp. But if that creates a problem.
We're just, we're just, what we're trying to do is, is make sure that we understand how your plans are to, to utilize what it is that you're building.
Yes, ma'am. We, now, the initial thought we had when we thought we'd get these wonderful sponsors, and we found out that's just rhetoric talk, where we were opening up for them for corporate events and stuff. We've since counseled that. We stopped talking about executive homes. I'm going to build a cabin for each one of my children's families. My children have families. I'm gonna build a cabin for each one of my children's families. My children have family. I want to build cabins on the land eventually, not right now, but for them to have, come and have family enjoyment. Because like I was saying up there, the 1.4 running cost of it, my wife and I just decided, we'll just eat the cost ourselves instead of trying to open up the ranch to facilitate things that could offset the cost of it.
Okay.
Do you, I have one other question. What are your plans for the black house, the old homestead, the big white house that Brian's going into?
Is that when you come in on the left at the entrance?
On the right, right.
Private entrance? What's the plan for that house?
Old, old, old black house.
Old black house?
Across the road from the entrance.
I'm gonna be honest with you, I've never been in it. I haven't seen it. I don't even know. I haven't been across the street up in, on the other side.
So there are no plans in particular for that house? Anything you'd like us to do with it?
I want you to maintain it.
Maintain it. We can make that happen.
Part of Brock's whole history. You okay? Okay. Okay, Doug, do you want to, do, or Johnny, do you have any other questions? Forget about Johnny.
I do not have a question. I'll have comments when we get ready.
Okay. Do you have anything to go through in your presentation outside of what we did last month? I know you.
Well, obviously.
Put forward another staff report.
The staff report is different from the last meeting because of the new information that we've got. New questions that weren't, well, some questions that were not answered, and of course, some new questions because of the changes. But that's whether you want to hear it. I mean, you've got a copy of the paper version of the staff report, so.
Do you want, do you guys want Doug to go through the revised staff report? Okay, if you will.
We'll do this as part of the public hearing.
Let's, let's go ahead because we're done with that. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I'll try to avoid repetition, but maybe some corrections in here. The request that we have, and you'll see here, this is the very specific number. There was new information. You remember that I thought it was about 65 acres. I drew a circle around what I thought it was. The number we have, very precise number we've been given is 305 acres, 646, point 646 acres. The address is 5020 Barnesville, Delaware. I did list, you were providing information that we didn't have before, and that was the sort of a special events that might happen at the ranch. The question here is, this process that we're through now deals with the 305 acres. It was unclear whether these activities would be solely held within those 305 acres or would be held elsewhere on, on the Rock Ranch. Just to summarize quickly, the new structures, 12 cabins, an additional dining hall, an event center of 12,000 square feet, dormitory, 25,000 square feet, which is 30 rooms, 300 kids. That's where they'll be housed. Then you've got a basketball court gym, 22,000 square feet, boxing gym, training facility, approximately 14,000. They added from the last meeting, the STEM lab. We don't have any information other than it's on a map. There's gonna be a prayer house. We have no information on that, other than it's been placed on the map. There is some floodplain on the property. It's probably not gonna be an issue. It's where the water is now. You'll see in the aerial that you have in your staff report, and we can show it later, there, that is floodplain in there. But it's probably been floodplain for a long time, and you don't see any of the structures proposed for construction in those particular areas. There is also a description, and you can see on the plat, the design, a concept plan. The buildings that are probably gonna remain, that would be the main office as you come in, be administration and check-in. There is a multipurpose building now that's used for events. There's a kitchen, ability to cook some food there or to serve it. There is a rock wall. There are outdoor basketball courts. And of course, there are parking lots, et cetera, scattered throughout the proposed site. That was new information. We didn't really know where the parking was gonna be until this latest concept plan. You have AR zoning in the area, a lot of pasture in the area, wide open property, and planted pine next door. There are review standards by which you must evaluate these proposals, as does the Board of Commissioners. Primarily, your assessment is impacts. That's what you're supposed to be evaluating, and that's what we look at. What are the impacts assessed? We have to have data to assess those impacts. The water, again, we have minimal information here. We know we have been provided, and this was a new number, 35,000 gallons per day. We really don't have any information about additional wells, what capacity is being used now, how any new withdrawals may impact the neighbors and their wells. In my experience, this is substandard information for a development this size. Sewage, we even have less information on. What you are provided is no generation, no information about how to dispose of it. This is substandard for a development this size to have this little amount of information about sanitary sewer and the water. Emergency services, we just provide those entities. Hopefully, they'll be able to serve any of the needs of the activities that go on here. So staff analysis, again, I talked about the things that we don't know. And again, this is to assess the impacts of when the development is there. What will it do in terms of demands for water, demands for sanitary sewer, and transportation? There's little information on the cabins. We really don't have much information on traffic generation. It's not uncommon in these sorts of developments that a letter is issued by one of these agencies to say, we have no concerns, or we do have concerns. That's normally solicited by the applicant to provide that input. Again, here, I talked about the potable water demand and the things we don't know. What are these water impacts? Sanitary sewer or wastewater, same thing. We don't know what the impacts are. We have very little information. We do have the events discussed, but we don't know is that within the 305 acres, that the subject of this special exception is about, or are these activities that are gonna go on elsewhere? Again, we have no information on the STEB lab or the prayer house, other than they're shown on a map. And again, services, emergency services, we have no indication that they've been contacted about what the impacts on their services might be from the development that we are being told about. So you basically got two alternatives here. Either, again, ask for the additional information. Some of it's the same information that you asked for before, that you are not provided. Very little of it is new. You were just not given anything or any detail about those particular impacts of this development. So you can either go along not knowing it and make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, or you can continue the public hearing again and want this more detailed information about what the impacts of this development is going to be. All right, so it's a little fuzzy. This is the best that I could do, sort of putting my own map together. The area in, looks black. It's labeled Legacy Ranch, 2022 Special Exception Area. Really, this process and this program we're discussing right now only deals with that area right there. Any permission, any permits for that will deal with that area there. You can see the other area, as I best could understand, the information we provided, that this does not address. That's the area in red. I believe that pretty much, except obviously, the southern end, which is cut off. But I think this includes most of the property that is subject to the development that is the Legacy Ranch. I apologize. We do have copies of, this is the second iteration of the concept plan that we were provided a week ago. And you know, there are changes. We have parking now. We have the two new buildings that we didn't have before. And this does provide us a little more information, at least in terms of the physical placement of where things can go, the traffic circulation, and where parking will be. And that concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Doug?
No, I don't have any.
Johnny?
I don't have a question for Doug.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I speak again?
Sure.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm a little bit taken back with the report because I, I turned in all this information as always I asked on last Monday. I called Doug Courier on Thursday, asking if he had any questions, anything I need to verify or further expand on. And the answer was, I hadn't had a chance to look at it yet. So from Monday through Thursday, which he hadn't had a chance to look at it, and then he comes up with all this. And to bring up water and sewage, that's ridiculous. You know, before I get a permit from, from the Building Zoning Department, that I have to go before Environmental Health. I have to go to the Health Department, have to go before EPD, if it's outside of their realm, and I have to get their blessing. There's nobody on this board or anybody in this room that can design this sewer system or the water source. And, and that's not needed until we get approval here. We're getting the cart before the horse. All we need is this blessing for you all to recommend approval, because what we're asking for, and after all the people who've spoken here tonight, I think it'd be ridiculous for you not to be able to give a positive recommendation. And that's my suspicion.
I think, I think where we're going, and I'm not gonna get into a back and forth, but I think we're, our job is to get as much information as we can to make an educated decision. Oh, hang on, on the full project. Wastewater, water in general, is a big deal because there's no sewage lines out there. There's no water lines out there.
Certainly.
That's fine. That's fine. We just want to know what's in place that you're going to do. You didn't have a 300 dorm, bed dorm either. So that's, that's a bit different.
That's true, but my thing is, if the zoning administrator had a question, how did he ask the question between pointing this analysis? Amen.
So that's, that's our job, is to, is to ask these questions and to get as much information as we can.
And I did address that, Madam Chair. It what is not gonna be addressed with municipal water or municipal sewer. We're doing this on-site. Dave Pridemore with Camp Grace addresses this the same way, with on-site system.
We understand that, but we're, we're asking what your.
I answered every one of your questions, Madam Chair.
Yep, yep, you gave us an answer. Yep, you did. Okay.
And if it wasn't to your satisfaction, I ask you, so if it's a rebuttal.
Do I have anything? Any questions?
Any questions?
Or, or, somebody give me something. We gotta go.
I don't have questions. Do you, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have a question. How about that?
I'll make a motion.
To include that?
To include that.
Very specific. Very specific. What the conditions are have to be very.
Johnny, there?
Specific. Johnny?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm listening.
Okay.
I'm making motion, I'm making motion to prove this with some conditions. Camp for four weeks per calendar year. No leasing to other persons or entities other than foundation. Remain in 48 weeks, open to the local community, Upson and surrounding counties. Agritourism designation must be, was waiting through Georgia Department of Agriculture. Item, items A through I on staff report. Prior to moving any dirt, wastewater, plant from water from EPD, which he would take care of. And permit each project a groundbreaking, which he would do. I approve this motion with those conditions.
Do you have any questions before we do this? What we're saying is that, that you're not gonna get a card blank. You're gonna follow the process for each dirt shovel that you turn. You're gonna have permit.
Yes, sir, that's what we're thinking today.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
Go ahead, John.
Yes.
Speak.
I think that, I think with, with their reputation that they would, they will follow protocol for permitting for every, you know, every project out there. I don't think that that would be a problem or situation, so, you know, for them to do this project, they're gonna follow those, those rules, those laws, those, those requirements. I recommend we approve it with the, with the conditions that he's gonna get permits, and he's gonna do what he's supposed to do as, as the business of that.
Okay, so Jeff just made the motion. You're seconding it with those same conditions?
Yes.
Is that what you're doing? Okay.
Yes.
Um, the, the only thing, the, the only thing that I want to just add, and it's not anything big, is what's on this diagram here for structures, buildings? That's what's included in this. Anything that's added outside of this has to come back here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Even if it's on this tract.
Yeah.
So making that amendment, are you still good with your motion?
Yes, yes.
Johnny, are you good with the second?
I am.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to approve with the conditions that was read, adding the, any additional buildings have to come back to us? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, Mr. Joel, what do you... What were your business? We're tied indicators.
Now, you gotta come and stay and learn. I don't want to give up. Don't gotta... This board is considered, this board is considered...
Just make a recommendation.
So my question is, how do you become a member? I mean, how do you...
There's only five. They run a thing in the paper to apply. But it's only three members.
No, there's five.
Five.
Four. There's a few.
The fifth one just moved out of the county. Moved out of the county.
It's gotta be a county. It's gotta be a county. Why don't you be ready to move to the county? So, I'll see y'all again. Listen, I started coming to the county commission meeting, the city management meeting, and just intrigued. I'm so intrigued by this. It moved me, the community involved me. So, thank y'all. But y'all, when I tell y'all, y'all let us go. Y'all let us go with permits. Right. Well, thank y'all. I'll see y'all again soon. All right, Mr. Pitts?
All public bodies in the state of Georgia have a time limit on speakers at public hearings. It's either five minutes or 10 minutes.
Tell them we should have served.
I wish I would have done that one.
We should have served them. I really thought this was the list that was just signed up. I came here saying...
All right. All right. Johnny, you still with us? Johnny? Johnny's gone. All right. We have...
You want me to get, I mean, I have to note that we've lost one of our members now.
We lost Johnny. We lost Johnny.
All right, so... On purposes of the record, we are now free members at 826.
Yes.
Which is still...
Yes. Item 3B, discussion of animal ordinance. Do I have a motion to push that to the next meeting?
I make a motion to push it back.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, discussion of revising the RV as temporary housing during construction. Do I have a motion to move that to September?
I make a motion to move it to September.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 5, other business, election of a vice chair. I vote that we wait till next meeting when Johnny's back.
Amen.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move that to September?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 6, planning commissioner issues and announcements. Anything?
I can't...
I'm all talked out. Item 7, secretary's issues and announcements.
Nothing new.
Item 8 is adjournment.
I make that a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 827.
Just hang on, just hang on.
This has gotta go the next time.